Good evening, everybody. It is Monday, February 12, 2024. This is the Legislative Action and Community Engagement Committee meeting. Let's jump right in with recapping with the advocacy letter from that we had presented at the meeting last month. It is up on our website. And we had also talked about the possibility of putting forth a petition. That was something that Mr. Tufano brought up. So I thought we would bring it here and have a discussion and, you know, kind of get our thoughts on that, what we wanted to do with that going forward. Any ideas, suggestions?
So I understood what Mr. Tufano was saying, and I think it's a good idea. I feel like a petition would be a good idea for something that's broader. Well, I was actually gonna say the opposite, that you need to Monroe, because if you're having people sign it. But at the same time, I could see it working because if you have been a more broad thing, because if you have that available and then send that share that with other districts, it's easier to sign that one petition and then you have that, you know, with larger number of signatures. At the same time, I do think there is something to be said about receiving a thousand different papers from one, like getting multiple things instead of one petition with a lot of signatures. I do think, once the hearings get put out, that if we have a petition, that would be something really good to bring with us. You know, we have this petition with X many signatures. So I do think there is merit to having that, but I don't think, man, we already have the legal letter on there. It should not be the only thing, maybe an additional. For other things as well.
Yeah, I was thinking of it also in terms of more of a broader scope too, and I think Mr. Tufano had mentioned that as well. That way it kind of, we can bring it to other areas to, you know, bring to the state. And I do check every single day. Their hearings are not posted yet, so hopefully, you know, soon the dates will be posted. And for those that don't know, in the community, it is, the letter is posted to our website. I noticed that there was a change in the formatting of it. I know some residents had some difficulty modifying the letter, being able to put their name and change the, get rid of the yellow text. I saw that, I think it's up as a Word doc now.
Yes.
Yeah, it's a Word doc, yeah.
So they can, instead of the PDF, they can just go into the Word doc and make the changes.
You were able to copy and paste it from the PDF, but there was confusion on how to actually copy and paste. I did, Mr. Maraldo was gracious enough to meet with myself and one of our community members that was having an issue with it. And he came in and we showed him, he was only, he was only selecting, I think, half of the document because it wasn't scrolling down, so we didn't capture the whole thing. So then we decided that there are other formats, one being Word document, Mr. Maraldo had suggested putting that up there, and then we also have what you also put together.
So, so, so that's why it's very important that as our community engages with the website, that they can give us feedback. And we had originally had a PDF document up there to make it easily downloadable and transferable regardless of whatever device people were on. And then we were finding that it was becoming difficult to transpose and stuff like that. So we got some feedback from that community member and he came in and he sat with us and kind of showed us from his perspective, some of the challenges. So we were able to then make some adjustments. We've also received some other feedback and come up with some creative ways on how we could even streamline the process even further. And what we've constructed along with our technology team is a form where now if users prefer to do it this way, they could log in. Or no, they don't even have to log in, they just enter in their information. They can enter their email address and just click send and it'll send you all of the relevant individuals that are listed on that page. I'll show it to you in a moment, so you get logged in. But we kind of were inspired by the link that we had seen on the, I guess that was.
Legislature sign, yeah.
And we were also hearing feedback from the community that they just wanted an easier way that didn't involve copying and pasting. Some people may want to still do that in case they would prefer to change the letter to their own fashion. We don't expect everyone to advocate in the exact same fashion as everyone else, but we at least want to give them a starting point. And if someone is lock in step with what is produced in that letter and they're, they feel really good about what's up on that site, they could just enter in their information. So they know it's not just coming from a, from a block, from an individual, and then we click send and it'll go to all parties.
So looking at the, the website, um, is there a way, because there is the PDF that they're still as well? Is there a way to make that a fill-in PDF, if you know what I'm saying? Like, I know how to like, you know, transfer to DocClub and do that, but to have it where you can click on that slot and then put your name in, which essentially you can just copy and paste or do it with the doc, but, you know, for the idea of making it as easy and user-friendly.
Yeah, and some, some, some users will prefer to work off the PDF. And if they have Adobe and all of those features that are synced to their email client, that would be, that, that would be very.
If they're gonna go with the PDF way, which means not making any changes, then they would just go with the way that goes to records and legislative.
Right, but with the way the PDF is, this is, they sort, it's here, it says my name is insert name. So you probably wouldn't want to send it because you would want to put your name there. So my.
Yeah, we could replace that.
Right, I'm just suggesting either get rid of that or make this insert name as a filling where they can type as into the PDF their name. But I think it is on the one he's gonna show. Well, this is from the district, but like I just went here from the website. But can't you just click on it when you want to insert it, not on the.
Currently, currently we can't, but with, with, without the button, as soon as I can get, yeah.
Just take the PDF off then.
Well, some people may still prefer to use a PDF.
Why? Not everybody has doc.
Yeah, if they're like, if they're, if they're on a different device or on a tablet or something like that, and if they're gonna let, sometimes you can text it or transfer a PDF on mobile device. Some people will even fill in PDFs and send it that way as a form, as a way, really, maybe in this setting, it wouldn't be as applicable. But when we're sending docs that we don't want to be altered, or things that we want to ensure the integrity of the document doesn't change from platform to platform. But I know that, that's, I think that's fair and we'll, we'll keep, well, as many versions of whatever as we can, as long as it's clear and what the instructions are. And as long as the community continues to give us feedback, we'll, we'll respond.
It does look great, and I like that the legislator contact information is right on the page. And then I'd also like that there is that email link to the state legislation page. And then that goes directly to our district, right? The legislature's there. And then if they want to contact the additional leadership, then they would do that separately through the emails that are listed.
And I imagine that our hope would be to, as other topics for, that would be worthy of advocacy emerge, we could continue to build off the site as we had said. And whether it's just school funding or anything beyond.
Senator, just, they all had Senator Gopals email. His phone number is there, the email is missing, but that's an easy thing. Everyone else's email is there, so it looks, it looks good. To turn this into something where we want to share it with other districts.
As a petition.
Right, for a petition. Do you want to discuss like, what we would remove? Because we want to, we want to be sensitive to the S2 districts, who would still very much probably want to see a modification in the funding formula. But suggesting that we, you know, have benefited a little bit from S2, clearly they're not going to sign something like that. And then obviously, like the stuff that involves the resolution for Apple Guard removal, we want to take out.
Yeah, I think though, that was part of the, what, what Mr. Tufano was saying as a petition of getting, taking that letter and turning that letter into a petition. If you don't want to do that and you want to go petition on another topic, we could do that.
It's a matter of taking the things that are directly applicable to Monroe and making it more of a broader scheme.
Yeah, but that's what we're here to do. We're here to advocate for ourselves and we're here to get more funding.
But what we had also talked about at the meeting, and Mr. Tufano agreed, was to put something out that would gain a lot of traction, starting here, that would benefit us, and then also branching outward to get more support from as many people across the state as possible. You want to try to get as many people invested in this.
So the idea was that it would still be a letter regarding funding, and it would still be something that we would benefit from because of the design, a new design of school funding formula. The idea would just be to make it more basic so that it is kind of be, you know, it has more influence in other districts as well. That a redesign of the funding formula needs, needs to be more fair and equitable across all districts in the state without disrupting the specific things in Monroe for the petition. That way we would get the buy-in from the other districts. So it would still be a funding formula, it's still benefiting Monroe, which as you said, is what we're here to do. It's just that it would also help benefit those other districts as well, and ones that we would be asking if they would want to be a part of this.
So I was able to look at the form. Hold up. So sorry, you can only see it on this side. So, so what we, it's not on the advocacy site yet because we just literally finished it a couple hours ago. So basically what the user would be able to do if they still choose, can I scroll down?
This is what I was referring to.
That's my fault because I was, I was told it's everything. So the, the user could, I don't know, can enter their information. And then, as you can see here, after hitting submit, it goes to the following people, and these are all the people that are listed on the website. Their email addresses are already loaded in there. This would be just a copy of the letter that we had constructed together. And then they can hit submit, and it just fires off. So this is something that, I mean, this is as minimal of, of work as possible.
This is ideal for someone that doesn't want to worry about converting, you know, converting the doc. You know, that's what I was referring to, I didn't realize that you couldn't see it yet.
Yeah, no, it's not.
Just someone who wants to leave it exactly like it is, put in their information and press submit and be done.
And I think the exciting thing about this is that as new purposes for advocacy emerge, we feel like this could be a solution that needs a variety of things. And I have to thank Mr. Feldman and his team that put this together, and we were literally constructing a bunch of ideas simultaneously. And it came from some of the feedback we got from the community, so I think that that was a useful practice.
And what's really good about this also then, I mean, I guess you can confirm this, from all the, is that if someone fills it out, we'll have a record. Will we have a record of how many people have filled out the form?
Absolutely. They'll get an email, my understanding that upon completion of this form, they'll get a copy of the email themselves as well. So they have a record that it's sent successfully. And would, yeah, I imagine we'd be able to track how many letters were sent. And I think that that would be interesting to see because I think that would be very powerful, you know, to quantify the community response.
My only other thought when I was looking, it starts to get hidden a little bit on the district page because it had been up here, but now the meeting links that are there, it's below. So I don't know if there's a way to make it like a highlighted pin that's at the top.
Well, when the meeting links go off after this week, then it goes back to the, to the top.
Right, but there's other things that are above it now too, so like the, the strategic plan, accelerated map parent. So, and ultimately we have a lot going on, so there might always be more things being put up there. So I just didn't know if there's a way to have it pinned somewhere, or even like up here, and you guys can't see what I'm pointing at, but like at the menu, having advocacy menu item.
So then the Board of Ed too, right?
Yeah, whatever.
And I feel like if someone is looking to partner with us by doing this, they'll go on the website and look for it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because, so, you know, we have a overwhelming amount of information that we try and share, and every time we, you know, look at the website, there's just so much to share that, you know, people have to sometimes look.
And the letters have the direct link into that page. So if you had a letter or you were on the Facebook page and you saw, you clicked the link, it brings you right into that page. It doesn't bring you to the homepage of the website. It brings you into the, into the advocacy page.
Sometimes also, you know, that there's time, you know, like I know that the accelerated math.
There's a reason why it's there.
This is very important, especially this time of year. But it, you'll, they'll always be there, it'll, it's currently a part of our slideshow. And I believe it's always gonna be the last, the direct link that was given, it'll be in the top three slides that go through. Right now the splash page is on the strategic plan, and then we have a promotion for our upcoming robotics event, and then the advocacy link will be third in the queue. But whatever, you know, Dr. Chan would like, we'll.
Well, we always want to make it user-friendly, but we also have to be respectful that we're running a district that has numerous, numerous things. This is very important as well. But I do agree, I think most people who go through Facebook or literally are looking for it, it is there, so.
Right. I just, I was gonna pull up the cell phones, like with any, like real regional, not that we have to do what other districts do, but like there's, you know, the links that have been there before, like they were directly like on the page. I just, obviously we do have a lot that's up there. I thought I had seen the advocacy one towards the top at one point, which is, I think.
Yeah, no, we, we'll pin it up there.
But I mean, I like, as a menu item, that wasn't under the Board of Ed as a sub-menu, I think. But, I mean, ultimately, you know, if people are mostly going through the link, then like you said, they're, they're gonna go directly to that. This is just more anyone who had stumbled upon it on our district website without having seen that thing. But if we think most of them are coming from the links that are being sent, then it's really not an issue.
And if you're on the homepage, it scrolls. The pictures scroll, and one of the pictures is the advocacy. If you hit the, and if you want to scroll through, then you could, there's an arrow to the side.
So then going back to the petition then, do we want to move forward with that? Do we want to discuss it further at the meeting next week with, you know, when Mr. Tufano is there? And kind of get more feedback from the rest of the board of how we want to move forward with it? I think it's a great way to, like I said, get more buy-in from a lot of people to have a larger impact. But if we don't feel like that's something important that we want to move forward with, then we don't have to move forward with it at this point.
Well, I mean, I think anytime we could get more buy-in for that, I, I think that we have to come up with what our greatest needs that we're asking for are. One of the things I know I've spoken to the administration about is the legislation that you had talked about with preschool, where they're giving grant money now to schools to build onto their buildings for pre-K. But they haven't helped us with kindergarten.
So I know that you had. I was gonna say, if I may, you had some details. Sure. So I was invited to the government, government youth, I want to apologize, I want to say league, sounds right in my head for whatever reason, from Miss Granite. Was, I really appreciated being invited, and I did attend last week. And while I was there, Senator Scanlon, I believe that's how you say his name, Jeffon Scanlon, was there and he was just giving a talk about the concept of how, how the Senate works, and he gave a lot of details, and I had an opportunity pre the conference to walk over and speak with him. And we're gonna be scheduling some, some meetings. So I was, I was very honest with him, and he was there with his, I believe the word is aide, I believe she was, and another individual. And I got their cards, they took mine, and we're gonna schedule an appointment because we think it's very important. And I said, honestly speaking, everybody's so worried about pre-K now, but there's one of whatever it is, and I don't want to be quoted, but a dozen or twenty or eighteen or fifteen or whatever it might be in the state. I said, and I did have my Director of Human Resources, who also is my grantperson, reach out with no response of any kind and no information. So I said, guide me, show me, help me. If we're doing something, or we're not doing something we should be doing. So he said, I couldn't agree with you more. He did agree that it's a conversation to be had. He didn't agree whether or not we should get any money, it may be clear. He agreed it's a conversation that needs to be had, and I'm gonna be moving forward. I hope to have more information to share, possibly at the next meeting in March. Because I want to give them an opportunity, this was literally just on Thursday. So it was just a conversation, and I'm gonna wait, I'm gonna reach out, and they're gonna reach out, so maybe we'll, we'll schedule an appointment. Because I think it's very important, and I explained that, you know, there is an expectation, but financially we were never in a, in a position because there's so much involved, and we were growing, 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 that that was our first priority. But, you know, now we want to really have that conversation, and he said, I can't imagine, I couldn't imagine that we couldn't have this conversation. Because it makes no sense. So you're providing funding for pre-K, but you still have districts out there where his district. I think, correct? Oh, he's Monmouth County. He's Monmouth County. But he is over, he did say that he heads up some of the different committees, he's on the budget committee as well. So he did say that it would not double negative, but it would not not be appropriate. So it would be appropriate to have the conversation. So I was excited because it's more conversation than we've had with anyone. I know, like I said, I asked, I want to say at least forty-five days ago, I've spoken with the Human Resources Director, Grant, she's our grant supervisor, Grants. And she's been trying her very best. She sends out emails and reaches out and leaves messages and to no avail. So if, if I can get an audience, that would be wonderful.
And honestly, that might be, if we wanted to go in a different direction that with the letter and not do specifically just an overall school funding task force, but partner. I actually had spoken last year, I think, at the Middlesex County meeting with one of the board members from a touch-in, who at that time they hadn't had full day kindergarten in place, and he, they had been working on it really hard. So he had shared a spreadsheet with me because they have looked into all the districts that did not have it. And so I actually had been tracking, and I think it's seven or eight districts now in this state, which we don't know what their situation is, if it's similar to what ours is, if there's other reasons they haven't been able to do it. But if we can reach out to them, would you be interested in collaborating to discuss how, you know, preschool is absolutely, you know, important? But in order for that to happen for our district.
Did you, do you have that list with the names?
I can send it to you.
That'd be fabulous. I'd be happy, I would be very comfortable to reach out to the superintendents and have that conversation, especially if I'm able to get an audience. So he is in Monmouth County, but they work directly with one another. Everybody works together in the various different counties, the senators, and, you know, he's on the budget committee. I need to talk a lot about the budget and, because it's all about money.
So if we got together a petition asking for.
Maybe that's a better way.
Funding for kindergarten, because that, that is
Specific.
A specific need that we have here, and we could also include the districts if they, if they, if they even want it. You don't know why they don't want it or why they don't have it, but the problem here in Monroe has always been, they took a vote back in 2011 and the community voted it down. So because they voted it down, the board then, and the administration then created a revenue profit center, the ECE. So right now we have a revenue generating item in our budget that's.
Private, it's basically private.
So in order, in order for us to put full day kindergarten in, in Monroe, we have to forego the revenue that we're currently getting, so that gets taken out of the budget.
And then add on to the.
Then, so you have to add on to the buildings for space, and then you have to, you have the expense. So it's almost like a double expense because you have the expense for the extra.
But then you have the money that you lose.
And then you have the money you're losing, right?
But here's my, my thoughts on that. And I, for the record, both, well, two, because my person's preschool still, have gone to ECE and they do a fantastic job. Right, my son loved his teacher last year, Mr. Hiro, whose name's changed, and Mrs. Corallo is wonderful. So like, definitely not knocking what they do over there because it, it really is fantastic. But in my eyes, suggesting like, well, you know, by removing that, we'll lose the revenue. It's almost like, you know, well, we're not, we don't want to be a district that does pay to play for clubs and activities. And I also can agree with that. Those are things that are not required, but we don't want parents to pay for that because it's something we want to be able to provide for students. And I kind of feel like full day kindergarten is a similar thing to that, it's not academic. But in that sense of, while, you know, it will be a hit on our budget, you know, I do think that it's very similar in that it's almost a pay-to-play for full day kindergarten. It's just, it's been.
I don't think anybody is suggesting that we, we're not for it, or we want people to pay for it because it's not important. But you hit the nail on the head. It poses a problem in our budget. I mean, you guys voted no to go over the 2% cap. Where would you want to put the money?
No to go to 2% cap, but we don't have to have that discussion.
Okay, but where, where would you want the money to come from?
And we started, we started looking at the cost.
The point I brought this up is, we don't have the money in our budget currently. We need the state to give us the money for it. We had the state give us the money for Apple Guard, and that was a great avenue to have a resolution added into the state budget. That's why I'm saying we need to push our legislators this budget cycle to say, you're giving, you know, however millions, billions of dollars to districts across New Jersey to build onto their buildings for pre-K, we need that money for kindergarten. I'm not saying let's not do it. I'm not saying we don't want it. I'm not saying that parents should pay for it and that it's not important. I'm saying we need to get the money, and we need to get the money from the state because it's due to us. It is due to us. They're providing, if you go through all those budget resolutions from last year, they had millions of dollars into districts to add on to, to add on, to fix their buildings, to put in sporting programs. The list is enormous of what they gave districts. We got $1 million.
And honestly, one thing about that that really bothered me is they've passed a bill that provides additional millions of dollars to charter schools now to add on to their buildings.
Yeah.
And here we are, a fully funded public school.
Because they've not asked them for it. Nobody in this district, nobody on this administration, nobody on the board in the past ever went and said, give us money for full day K. They put it out to a budget, it voted no, and they said, but, we're done. We don't need full day K. The people said no. And now we're stuck here in this predicament of, we have budget constraints. It, it, we don't have, we're now made it into a revenue, and we need to find money then to pay for it. Nobody's saying make the parents pay for it. We're saying, I would love for us to have full day kindergarten, absolutely. Laura can't just create a magic ball of money and say, okay, it's in our budget, we can afford it.
It's millions and millions of dollars.
We need to, we need to push the state to give us the funding because I am, i- it's unacceptable that the state of New Jersey is giving school districts money to build onto their buildings for pre-K when they have districts that can't afford kindergarten. It's unacceptable, and I would agree that we should put a petition together or a second letter, pushing that. And pushing those committees that falls under, because under the Senate, there's, and the Assembly, there's all the different education committees, and you hit them for it.
And I think by finding those other districts, and I appreciate you saying you reach out to those superintendents, that hits other legislators as well.
Absolutely.
You can't just have it from one district.
Right, because that's a different district, like he's from a different district. So, yeah, no, please forward that to me. I will make the phone calls, and I'm also gonna reach out to have the contact, to be able to have a, I would love a face-to-face to have these conversations, and perhaps I can get the other superintendents on board before the face-to-face, which I think would be fantastic. Because, because we, we are having those conversations about what the cost of kindergarten would be, but you just can't, even if we go, even if we are going over cap, you're talking millions and millions of dollars. We started looking at the infrastructure for the buildings. We started looking at employment, so staffing is a yearly occurrence, so it's not a one-time cost. There's, there's a lot involved, and I'm all for it as well. And I, I don't know, you know, not for this year, but perhaps for next year, maybe it would be another question, a second question on the budget. You know, because we feel that the public wants it, and as educators, we feel it's the right thing, and as committee members, you know, for the board and what's best for kids, you feel the same thing. But someone has to pay for it, and we'd like the state to pay for it. Absolutely. So I will be happy to take care of that. I think that'll be great. So yes, if you could give me that information, that would be fantastic. I mean, I could look it up if you already have it, why not?
You know, I have the database. I, I haven't updated in the last couple of months, but.
But that's okay, because my call, they already get it. That'd be great. I appreciate that.
That was from May.
Yeah.
May, I think, was the last county meeting, right? Also, I think what's interesting to note too is the new commissioner now is who we had met with back in 2022, I believe. So Kevin Damer, who was the, quoted as being the state's fair funding formula expert, is now our education commissioner. So I would be curious to see where that stance goes now with the funding formula.
When you met with him, did he, did he feel like it was unfair, or did he just sort of?
I mean, we kind of threw everything at him that we had with all the documentation and everything, and he was like, okay. I, I see what you're, I understand what you're saying, and I understand your frustration, but we came up with this formula this way for a reason, and there's really nothing that we can do about it.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, I guess, not really his decision, it's the Senate and the Assembly, but at the same time, it's always good to have that support.
It's the formula that the Department of Education came up with, but if you can't change the formula, let's find a way, a different way to get the money.
And they, they, they don't contend that it's flawed the way we.
They don't look at it right.
So no, they don't acknowledge that there was really the.
And the districts that they felt lost money because they say it was flawed, bored. They're not happy with it now because it was the other way around. And then there were districts that felt they should have gotten more money, and some of them did. But if we could turn around and, whether it be a petition, we have the meetings, however we do it, you know, we didn't know we can get the money, and all of a sudden I got an email out of nowhere that we got a million dollars.
Well, it was him who, who told us that the task force wasn't gonna be created.
Got it.
Because that was one of the big questions I had to him. I go, well, when is this, when is the formula gonna be updated? There's a task force, and he goes, oh, there's not a task force yet. The task force, the governor asked for the task force to be created. They didn't create it.
Right, and then like six months later, I asked.
Yes.
And they were all laughing. It still hasn't, at all. I asked again this year, same question, same answer.
So going forward then, so we'll talk about next month, putting out a petition. Maybe we can start generating some ideas, a, a format of what the petition will look like, what it will say, what we want to put out. If you, you know, are able to have those conversations, and say, you know, the committee here is looking to, you know, put forth a petition to kind of gather support and see how we can push this forward, and then we can share it.
Maybe we need to narrow down, I think Ms. Kirby said it on our true need. So our true need was Apple Guard, and now we have $10 million for Apple Guard. You know, we're very, you know, fortunate between state and now the township bought in with us, which is fantastic. So maybe the next thing is we need money for kindergarten, how much money do we need? What do we need and how do we get it?
Okay, great. Um, anything else? Okay, so then the next item on the agenda is the legislative committee update. I know we didn't really have much time for that at the last committee meeting, so.
Yeah, I can just be brief. I had shared with you guys that as an attachment, the different things we had sort of went over at the. Yeah, um, I can just be brief. Um, I had shared um with you guys that as an attachment, the different things we had sort of went over at the December meeting. Um, the next meeting uh is in March. Um, but there's, you know, there's a lot of movement. Um, I shouldn't say, but there's a lot of bills that are put out. Um, and then what they sort of do at the Missouri School Association is they share whether or not they support them or they have concerns about them. Um, you know, and just sort of like looking through it. Um, the ones that had had movement at that point that, you know. I guess are worth mentioning. There was an educator scholarship program. Um, to, you know, to find new teachers, um, electric school bus funding was conditionally vetoed. Com- com- compost, compost, oh my god, I can't say the word. That how did this, all right, uh, was also uh vetoed as well. Um, and then the ones that were on the desk that had paths, passable houses, um, a school audit delay, which allowed for a deadline. Doesn't really um affect us much. And then um school safety and security task force. Um, to establish a task force for that, which is obviously extremely important. Um, would be like to see other task forces as well, yes, but uh, security drills. Um, and students with disabilities, which, you know, I think is crucial, just allowing for. You know, to make sure that when you're doing a drill, the students that have those needs, because I mean, I know that from teaching, like, there has been that concern, like. Um, and then just the ones that were on the move. Um, I'll just give like a really quick thing about. Uh, using transfer of county college credits, um, which was for also for new teachers. Um, the tax deduction for teacher classroom supplies, uh expedited certification route for paraprofessionals. Um, eliminating uh basic skills requirement um for certain teaching certifications. Um, let's see, I mean, yeah. So here's actually something that I think it has not gone through yet. But it is sort of applicable to us, um, eliminating a vote on the school budget for type two school districts in April elections. Except for separate proposals to spend above cap. Um, because my understanding is even if there was. Um, the chance where we didn't have to go over cap, whether it's this year, next year, in April, we would still have to vote on the budget. This S four two oh nine would potentially be taking that away. So you could still be having your. Um, but elections in April, but you would not have to vote on the budget unless you're going over the cap. Whereas right now you do, even if you're not going over. Um. So yeah, so eliminate vote on school budgets for type two school districts in April elections, except for separate proposals to spend above cap.
So. Has to vote on the budget if you are going above the cap.
Right. So right now, if you are a type two district where your election is in April. You have to vote under school budget no matter what.
Right, even if it's.
Even if it's under the cap. So what this would do is say, it would be similar to November. Whereas long as you're within your two percent cap, you do not have to put the budget out to the public.
What's a type two school?
We, so the ones that have their election in April versus uh type ones are the ones that are in November.
So let's say next year.
Um, it doesn't stay here. It's it's small. It's, I think, around twenty, maybe. It's it's not alive. Um, but that's just, it hasn't done anything yet. It's just been proposed and there, it's been discussed. Um, and school association, it says that they support it, that they would want to seek an amendment, but doesn't list here specifically what it is. That's something I can ask about next month. Um.
But that doesn't affect our school district.
Um, it doesn't unless we were not going above the cap without moving the election back to November.
Said that was for type two though, right?
Right, which is type two, which is the, right. April is type two, November elections are type one. So it would affect us if we are not.
But if we're not going over cap, we we don't vote on the budget. Regardless of whether you're going over the cap or not.
So once you move it to April, you have, I didn't, I didn't, I have to.
Well, maybe this is something new then. Right now, you don't have to keep it in April. That was the, Vito explained that whole process.
Well, she's saying if you keep it, what she's saying is, let's say, we don't move it, stays in April and next year, that's a year. Next year, we're below the two percent cap.
Right.
But because you moved it to April, so it has to be voted on. If this passes, it doesn't. Did I understand that correctly?
Yeah, now if we moved it back to November, then we don't.
As long as you leave it in April, it has to be voted on regardless.
The only time you can vote on.
Is in April.
Budget is April. On the school budget, it has to be in April.
Right, but this is.
Not moving it back to November, we don't vote in November on it.
Well, that's, but that's what she's saying, that if we moved it, in other words, if we don't move it back and it just stays in April, regardless of where we are financially, it always has to be voted on, even if it's below the two percent.
Right.
Currently, no.
Well, she's saying currently it is.
That's what this is saying, and this is eliminating that going forward, but right, we can ask Vito about it next week.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Just, I can write, I'll write this one down to ask about. But that's what this is saying. I actually.
So currently, if it if it being April, not this year, but the following year, let's say if we're below.
Right.
According to what you are saying, currently, we have to, we have to vote on it regardless.
You don't.
Well, that's what she's reading.
Right.
I believe she's reading a proposed bill.
Right.
I mean, not reading. The way it states now.
So.
I'll ask, I can ask about it next next week.
Because according to what Vito said, excuse me, what Mr. Gagli already said, it does not get voted on unless above the two percent.
Exactly.
That's what he said, but that's the first.
Because the two percent is a separate question. Right, no.
No, it's the budget.
It's the budget, yes, no.
Okay. All right, um.
So you have the voting for board members and then you have.
And then it's just one question on the whole.
That's it. Yes or no?
Okay.
And I, it's funny you said that because I was confirming that with Ms. Allen. So. It was my understanding that if you're not above the two percent cap, that question wouldn't even be there. Is that correct?
Yes.
But from what you're reading, you're making it sound like currently, it always has to be voted on. It's in April unless this was the past. That's what I'm hearing.
Yeah, I I can look into it and then we can ask next week. Um, I'll bring back whatever I find. Um, because when I saw this, I had done a little bit of research and that's what I had seen, but maybe Mr. Gagli already knows some information that maybe I I didn't have. Because right now what it said is that you have your budget and then anything over the two percent cap is a second question. And then if you don't. Go right now, even if you don't go over it, you still have to put it out there. It would just be one question. Um, and this is saying that you wouldn't have to do that question if this passed, but that's not.
That goes back to the second question.
Which is separate from the actual budget.
Completely different than just the budget.
So a second question might be.
It's not worked into your budget, it's over the two percent, so we're asking for more money for that. You could vote down that particular item.
We're not doing that.
We're not doing.
We're doing one whole budget that's above the two percent. Yes or no? Do you support the budget or don't you support the budget? The second question, which people had brought up.
So this might be about second question.
That might be about the second question.
Okay.
So people had brought up that why can't we just say it as a second question? Well, we, that was the conversation we had.
Maybe not, maybe they're getting away from, I don't know the whole context. I have not read that, so I I'm just speaking and I. Hope I don't get misquoted. You go with, from what, sure, from what it sounds like, perhaps. They're moving that away from November, that if you're going over the two percent, you can't ask an accepted question in November.
You have to make a second question.
Have to make a second question.
Which would make sense.
Yeah. That.
I was gonna try to to pull it up.
But if your budget's not over two percent, you don't have to go out to vote to the public.
Even if it's in April.
That's the case. And if we do it this year, and there's no three year, I don't know why the public continues to write on Facebook. That.
That's why I don't.
Going out to vote this year costs us three hundred thousand dollars. It does not. We are not, we are not committed to do it three years.
Nope, you can turn around and change it.
Next year, yeah. So that's more misinformation that continues to get spread that this budget vote.
On the legislative committee too about the resolution, like they may also be able to provide some more insight on that.
On the election, like.
Yeah, on that particular.
Yeah, I can reach out to either John Fisher or Carl Tinksley um to see information they have.
Yeah, and then we can talk about that, talk about it with Vito too at the next week's meeting.
Yeah, that's right. Because it's different than what I was read and was told when I had researched this, but again, it would be good to get it directly from. Um, and then just, I won't go through the rest of the.
What bill number was that?
That it was, I think, uh, there was, it's S four two zero nine and then A five seven eight nine. So it's in both houses. Um, so I can, I'll email it and then if you wanna, I mean, I'll be able to put it on the agenda, but that way we can look into it. Ask Vito before the meeting. So if he wants to research it at all. Um, right. Also, then just the other things, um, that, one of the things that they actually opposed is putting the F A S A as a graduation requirement. Um, which, you know, that doesn't necessarily affect us. I don't know if it's passed yet. This was as of December.
I've heard about this three years ago.
Yeah.
This was at the high school that you had a, because.
You, you don't have, you didn't have to.
You didn't have to, they, they recommend every.
They recommend this is making it a mandatory.
And anybody who's going to college or receiving even grant money or awards. Or any type of financial assistance that even if it doesn't have to be paid back, still must complete the F A S A. To my, to my knowledge.
Is N J S B A against it?
They are.
Yeah. Um, so then just.
I would be too. I mean, I don't know how you guys feel, but I, if you don't want to provide your financial information.
It's very detailed.
As a graduation requirement, that that.
I don't think that should be required. I would like to, there was a bill that was proposed, I don't see it on here, that I thought was really interesting. Where it would require parents to either submit the free and reduced lunch application. Or choose not to fill it out. Um, so.
I remember that.
Right, I think that would be.
Wait, wait, I'm sorry.
So right now, you don't have to fill out a free and reduced lunch application. And this isn't saying that parents would have to, but right now you only get that information if if you want. Like you don't have to say, no, I am not interested.
As far as you have to complete it, um, you have to send back that you were not going to complete it.
Right, so this is what this would say. And honestly, my reason for that is when I looked into it, the threshold for reduced lunch is actually a lot higher. Than I had initially thought, like a family of five, I think, is in the fifty, sixty thousand, which, listen, it's not a lot in today's time, but it's. Not necessarily as low as people may have thought. And the reason why I really like this is because a lot of our grants and families and things like that. Are based on free and reduced lunch sometimes. So if there was someone who maybe hadn't been aware. And now they have to either opt out, which would just be like a simple click, I don't know, just do this. Um, you know, or say, hey, you know what, I can fill this out. It could potentially increase that number for us. They win because, you know, they're getting additional assistance and then the district wins because there's potentially more money coming to us depending on. How many people are affected. Um, but I don't think that has passed.
He has. So he signed, he signed the legislation requiring the F A S A.
Oh, he did.
For graduation.
I thought I heard.
But there is a waiver that could be submitted to by the parents and the students.
Choose not to.
Okay, so sort of like I'm saying, I would like to see the other.
Exception from the part.
So how have we implemented that? Just passed?
Yeah, it just passed, so I'll touch base with the high school.
Cause last, last year it was a, um. It started like three years ago as an option, but that's why I remember it. I mean, they they put, the high school did push it last year. They had a parent session. Um, where senior parents could come out and they did a whole financial aid session on it. And we were encouraged to fill it out regardless, because a lot of, a lot of parents don't realize it's not just for financial aid.
No, you're absolutely right. If someone wants to give you a full ride.
So if you, if you.
Still can't fill it.
If you apply.
Yeah.
And you get accepted, but you haven't. They won't even consider you for academic money.
So it's not a bad thing.
Even like work needs, I mean, work, like.
Yeah, work, nothing. Work study, you're correct, study, yeah.
No, you can't get even anything. So if someone wants to say, here's fifty thousand dollars a year, presidential, you don't have to pay back anything. And it doesn't make a difference what your financial status is, you still have to complete the form regardless of what your financial status is. And a lot of parents do not know that. So it's helpful.
And you have to do it on the front end.
Correct.
Fill that out in on the front.
Of course, you can't get anything.
Right, but um, yeah, I.
But if there's a waiver, if there's always a way to say, no, I'm not interested in providing that information, what's wrong with that?
That, that's exactly what I was.
And I would imagine that's a conversation you should have in your, early in your junior year.
Right.
Not wait till.
I, because I totally agree with you. Like, if someone decides they're going right into the workforce, why should they have to fill that out if they're not.
Right.
Pursuing higher education. Um, you know, I would encourage anyone who is going to do it, but I don't think we should require it.
But that's something to, yeah, make sure that we're.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can identify how we are notified that it's filled out.
With a waiver.
Yeah, with a waiver. What is your, how's it reported back to us?
Oh, yeah.
It's not something.
It goes through the other website, that's right. And it's very difficult to.
Imagine if they're mandating, I mean, this is the thing that they're, they're going to think about this, but if the state is mandating this, they're going to have to come up with a way to report to the district. Because it's not just Monroe that has this.
Yeah, right.
They're going to have to figure out how to tell all these districts whether or not people.
Well, I know it was a conversation for years.
Dr. Kattely is.
Sure.
He, he did actually send it to us earlier. It was mid-January, end of January that he approved this. And then just because it was signed in the legislation, then the wheels get going, the Department of Ed, as to how it actually looks.
It could, it could be in twenty twenty seven, even though it was signed in twenty twenty four.
So we, we, we saw that it got signed.
Now that they signed it, they, now they gotta figure out how to do it.
Can it's all the districts to do it, right.
Correct. That's the typical.
But I think it's good for people that are watching that they know if their children have an opportunity to receive any type of aid, that they do not have to pay back, academic or sports. You have to fill out the F A S A. And a lot of people that don't know that, you don't want the children to be shortchanged and not get something they could have gotten because they don't know.
Right.
I'm not, I I won't get any financial, you know, the statements are, I, I, not me, not Sherry Chantley, the statements of the universal you make the statement. I make too much money, so I'm not going to fill it out. And then someone gets offered a twenty five thousand dollar, thirty thousand dollar scholarship, they won't get it.
Right. It's, it's different because it's higher education, it's much more expensive, but that idea of, you know, oh, I already make, you know, double digits.
Right, why would it fill it out?
Whereas you never know.
No, you don't.
Um, no, I agree. So just really quick, because I know there are things, um, the other thing that I thought was really interesting is that they had created an annual advocacy agenda and action plan. Um, and so just to like highlight a couple of things really quick, the, the main categories were school funding and finance. Uh, special education, staffing and labor relations, student health and wellbeing, student achievement and facilities and construction. And one of the things they said that was advocate for state funding and reform levels this districts in modernizing aging school infrastructure. Um, you know, the, the, a lot of them are the things that you would expect. One thing that I thought interesting, because this has been a topic, is advocating for universal preschool meals fully funded by the state and or federal government. I know that there's been pushed towards that. It's not there. Um, so who knows, maybe free and reduced lunch won't even be needed in the future, but. Um, and then there's something about the bus driver shortage by making licensing a bit more flexible without diminishing safety of pupils. Um, and there's obviously stuff in here about state aid. Um, but I thought it might be something cool maybe for our. Committee to do is sort of create our own like advocacy plan. Um, I mean, we sort of are creating that as we go, but. I just thought it might be something worth looking into, like, you know, we do this in January, you know. In February, we reach out to get the budget hearing, you know, something like that, like a calendar and then. All right, I'm done.
Okay, um, any, anything for Katie?
Yeah.
Okay, um, the next item was a website update. I know we briefly just talked about it. Um, with the advocacy update and things along those lines.
The website is, I, I just can't say enough, we're really making strides in making it more user friendly, um, the strategic plan. Um, which is our next, we have actual strategic planning, um, section, category, subsection, subsection, whatever you want to call it on the website. Um, and I'm very pleased, I don't know if you have anything specific that you wanted to comment about or. I mean, I, I think um, for the last couple of years, the website has really just gone in the right direction.
Yeah, I, I definitely think that there's more updates. I think that there are, there's more information um on the site curves. I like that the pictures um are, are being updated. And then, you know, I would say the only thing I would be wondering about is the district calendar, if we can make that, um. I don't know, I don't want to say more detailed, but like it has information from some of the schools, but not all of the schools. And I'm not sure if it's the schools input it, because then each school has like sort of their own calendar on their website, so I don't know necessarily how that. Is put in, if, like, for example, uh, Wednesday, May eighth, it says seven o'clock. M S musical theater performance. Um, and then May sixteenth is high school instrumental concert. But then the rest of the concerts aren't listed there.
It's not.
Well, if I, if I make Jack too lame and you, you spearheaded this, if I'm not mistaken, the year before last, when you started with the district calendar, we had the conversation about the district calendar.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think the district calendar has always been the very kind of broad calendar, but we can tweak whatever needs to be tweaked.
Right.
It's.
Yeah.
Because then I look on the different schools, they don't, a lot of them don't have the events there, so I don't know if it just takes it from that.
Yeah, so that.
That, so that's clearly, I don't want to speak on behalf of the web team, but that looks like a widget. That's driven by a Google Calendar from sort, that must be sourcing from, from somewhere. Um, but I'll, I'll talk to, uh, you know, I, yeah, that's fair. I, I, again, I don't know how, uh, that particular calendar. If that's an internal calendar that's populating that, but my guess is that those are being, those are being pushed from multiple sources into that widget. Yeah, sorry, we're talking like.
I know which one you're talking about. I don't know which calendar it's linked to. Like how it's. That's what I say, if we find out where the source is.
Oh, thank you. So this is right on the side.
I would just say that for, the, the published school, camp board approved school calendar, that's PDFed on the website.
That's there. But when I saw this and it had a couple of the school events, I didn't know where.
It's got a, most, it's gotta be a Google calendar.
Yeah, we'll have to look at it. You know, you have to remember that. It's very different. It's not the same on a phone.
Yeah.
Not the same on a phone at all. And I think one of the things that we have to realize, and I can't speak for the districts, but we do everything internally. There are other districts that have external, very expensive companies that pay to have it run. We, we've talked about it before and there, I think that, um, some of the areas, I think if people want the information, they have to go directly to the actual district calendar. Um, we can look into it. We'll look into it tomorrow.
Yeah, and I, I just.
Saturday, March thirteenth, Shrek Junior, the musical. So it's. March, March twenty third.
But then it pulls, but then if you go backwards, it was somebody that was not.
Right, May eighth, it says middle school musical theater performance, which is Shrek.
Which could have been like a date at some point that maybe they.
Prior date, what they do is, and we used to do it as principal, you remember, we sent around all the dates because we wanted to be respectful of everybody's times. We sent around all the dates, it could have been populated and then it was changed.
Right.
And that's exactly probably what happened.
The elementary concerts are all in there, from May thirtieth, June fourth, and Woodland, June fifth.
Yeah, no, they shared, they have their own shared calendar, that's why. So I, I'll say this, it works to the website, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say that then, like, if you look, the middle school choral concert and band concerts aren't on there. So that's what I was just gonna say, like, it would be great to have it from all the schools. I wasn't sure how it becomes populated, or have it just as a district thing and then the schools have their own calendars. Because if you go to the school homepage, it has their own.
It's probably coming from a couple of different sources.
Yeah, it looks like it's pulling probably from each of the.
And I think what happened is, I do agree that any error that would po- would possibly exist would be the pre creation of the calendars to be respectful of not being crossing over. And then if you make a change and that is not removed, they both exist. So you're seeing Shrek, May eighth, but it's March twenty third.
Right.
And then with regards to kind of the approach we're taking to the website.
Yes.
And, and we're aware that, you know, there are some parts and, and the uncover pages, uh, from time to time. But as the need arises, like for, I think the advocacy, uh, plan is the perfect example of that. Let me see if I can pull it up here. Let's see, I'm trying to get ahead of the game.
Yeah.
So like as the need for something arises, like for example, the strategic plan, when we are trying to find an effective way to give the community one-stop shopping access. We saw that there was a document here and then buried under the Board of Ed tab, there were more webpages there. So clearly that would be a perfect example of a website renovation that was needed. The advocacy page is another example. Last, last school year, Mr. Barrandica redid the athletic website. So as these, um, important pieces that we find that is, that the community really relies on the website for, and that we, we kind of, we've been taking the uh, that particular page, reconstructing it, trying to match it up with what would be most user friendly, and then we'll purge whatever residual uh, web links. We're there, and we still will find dead links. And, and I, the one tab that probably needs the most updating and admittedly, we haven't really touched would be the Board of Ed tab, because many of those things are required to be up there, uh, particularly, uh, the meeting notices and everything like that. So we don't necessarily touch that. So what you see what we're trying to do, the strategic plan tab was originally buried in there, but what we were concerned about was that it would be misconceived as a board-only product. So then what we did, we pulled it out, made it more of a district website. That's why you can now find it there. And then, um, the advocacy, again, it's buried in the Board of Ed tab, but that's really more of a district. Uh, so eventually what we would probably do is pull that and once these more, more time-sensitive links come up there, like you said, it'll be pinned back up there. But, uh, inevitably, we're, we're, the gifted and talented program is another, uh, example, where as you can see, it's very, we stripped it down and then we're reconstructing it as the programs take shape. But that, so.
Yeah, there's definitely.
That would be the, that's kind of what we're doing and, and we'll continue to build it out.
You make, you make the changes as you come across them.
And, and, and for example, the meeting with the community members that we had last week, you know, that really drove some of the more, um, because we realize we learn what the community needs and then we'll try to, to build around it and, uh.
The only other feedback I've actually had from a couple of community members, as well as myself, and this was something that you did, which I thought was fantastic, was the, um, social media page last year, there was that ev- every week you had the list of the events that were coming up and it was everything. So there was athletics, which would probably be still on the athletics page, but then there was also musical performances, or if there was a science fair that was happening at the high school, because I know people were really excited that, like, they could look to see what was going on in the district that week. I don't know if that was challenging to put together um, because there is a lot of information, but I know like that people were really quite happy with that, so.
Yeah, so, yeah, it's, it's, it's challenging because the district is, there's so many things going on and inevitably you worry that you've lost someone off. But, uh, so we, we try to, uh, we've been trying to create events, uh, so the public can have understanding of social media is just a narrow, um, audience. But, uh, I think that that could be something that maybe it could kill two birds with one stone. Uh, if we were to come up with a more, uh, practical solution to the district calendar.
Right, I think just, maybe that's the answer. We were just chatting to see, we need to confirm where it's pulled from, right?
Yeah, that's something we could easily map. I just have to find out where that widget is.
Because then, you know, the other thing was, last year it actually brought up that Verbio app that pulls all of the different events going on. It pulls from our, probably from this, from the different schools in the district. So they're getting that information. I don't know how people are using it. It's being advertised by the library, but.
Yeah, so, so basically, they probably work with the, I would imagine, with the record firm. Or, so it still would inevitably come down to the events being sourced from a single place.
Same place, right.
Um, but again, if we were to come up with some sort of shared calendar that coincided with our calendar, it would have to be governed somewhere.
That's what I was just saying, about the governance.
Yeah, and then you kind of live in those weird worlds between operations and tech. Uh, but, uh, you know, that would be that would probably be the best solution for that and for the public, so they could just, hey, what's going on this week, check on the calendar and be at your level.
Right, I have.
All right, um, we are out of time. It's seven o'clock. Um, the last, we talked about the budget hearing already, the survey we can.
Well, the last one, I could just talk of a survey, because there will be one, because it's very simple. We now have a strategic action plan, and because we have a strategic action plan, we're going to have the state of the district. So it's gonna happen. It's going to occur, and I believe it's gonna occur at our first meeting, because we're trying to, we, we really respect NJ SBA and